I'm Wayne Kazmercheck, I'm the district superintendent. And it's my honor to kick us off this evening. Excuse me. We have a large number of students to recognize before tonight's school board meeting. For many years, the White Bear Lake area high school theater program has represented the district very well in the Hennepin Theater Trust Spotlight Program, and this year is no exception. This fall's Mamma Mia! production received Outstanding Overall Production and Outstanding Overall Performance, the highest accolades possible. Due to these high marks, the students will have an opportunity to showcase their talents at the Spotlight Showcase in June. Many of the student groups and individual students also received awards which we'll highlight as we read through the participation or the participant names. So first of all, congratulations, all of you who are here, and those of you who were not able to make it. Okay, first of all, so we have many, many, many students to go through here. So I think it might work best if we hold our applause until after each group. So first, we're going to start off with the crew members. Okay, congratulations to the following students who participated in the Mamma Mia! Crew. In addition to the overall production awards, the Crew earned the following awards: Outstanding Technical Crew, Outstanding Overall Technical Team, and Outstanding Light and Sound Board Operators. I'm going to apologize in advance for any names that I mispronounce. Given that my name is what it is, it's still no excuse for me to mispronounce, but I will apologize in advance. So, okay, to kick us off, Amaya Abram, Amanda Allman, Sarah Anderson, Elita Argawi, Molly Brusaf, Joe Campfield, Emma Carroll, Tina Chahuri, Andrew Eichler, Alyssa Erickson, Xander Farrell. Okay. Jordan Feit, Ashley Gardner, Morgan Gustafson, Hannah Gustafson, Vincent Hacker Jarvey. Vincent was Outstanding in Technical Leadership Award. Nikki Hamm, Aslyn Hamel, Grant Horwath, Kenzie Jensen, Stephanie Larson, Alina Lee, Peyton Lee, Lexi Like, Mitchell Loeburg, Aiden Lyons. Thanks for coming, Aiden. Betsy Merrier, Grace Nathanson, Julie Olson, Emma Peranto, Elizabeth Pope, Aliyah Rancour, Amber Redman, Lucy Stotzel, Sophia Tatki, Daisy Vanderwood, Fiona Wiltsey, Landon Witt, and Nathaniel Wolfe. All right, that, those are our crew members, so let's give them a round of applause. Now, I think the plan is to wait until all groups are announced, and then we're just going to take one big, one big photo of everyone who's here. Okay? All right, next, Pitt Orchestra members. Congratulations to the following students who were involved in the Pitt Orchestra. In addition to the overall awards, the students received honorable mention in the Student Orchestra category of the Spotlight Process. All right, Kristin Schwinnard, Alan Din, Devon Helms, Garrett Jansen. By the looks of it, you're the sole representative. Sandy Knutson, Bree Olinger, Ryan Peterson, A.J. Perrin, Madeline Schulte, Matthew Springer, and Matthew Wayman. All right? And that is our Pitt Orchestra members. All right, cast members. Congratulations to the following students who were involved onstage as cast members. Additional awards earned by this group of students include Outstanding Vocal Performance by an Ensemble and Outstanding Acting Performance by an Ensemble. All right, Clay Ainsley. Clay was honorable mention for performance in a supporting role. Anna Barton, Trinity Bialik, Chris Beenick, Meredith Bowermaster, Phoenix Bradley, Joey And Joey was recognized for his performance. He was awarded the Outstanding Performance in a Leading Role. Cora Donahue, Ally Eichler. And Ally was recognized for her outstanding performance in a leading role. Gracie Fink, Crystal Green, Tyler Haynes, Beatrice Handlin, Dylan Harches, Maya Harris, Joey Hadeen, Nathan Hubert, Claudia Johnson, Kylie Kendall, Ryan Kroll, David Krzakscy... Krzakscy, that's a good one. That's a lot like mine. Sam Larson, Carter Lerned, Ashiana Lee, Rebecca LaRue, Grace Majala, Amy Merrier. Amy was received an individual award, Honorable Mention for Performance in a Supporting Role. Kirby Masso, Jana Miller, Ninchai Nocheklana, Jackson Ogden, Joshua Powell, Brenna Ryland. Brenna received an individual award, Honorable Mention for Performance in a Leading Role. Jordan Rodriguez, Sydney Seko, Chloe Schweiger, Ian Shepler. Ian received an individual award. This is an interesting one, the EValuator Shout-Out Award. Noel Sommers, Gillian Staub, Per Swenson. Per received an individual award, Honorable Mention for Performance in a Supporting Role. Marin Veker. Marin or Maran? Marin, okay, thank you. Marin received individual award, Outstanding Performance in a Supporting Role. Emilia Wenzel and Alexis Williams. All right, that is our cast, those are our cast members. Okay, next, we have a group of adults. Congratulations to the following adults who took on leadership roles behind the scenes. Thank you for your unbelievable support of our students. Amy Abram, Katie Altough, Mary Jane Merrier, costumes. Suzie Pierce, House Manager. Karen Ryland, Eliza Snortland, Laura Shepler, Mark Shepler. I'll get your certificate to you. Corinne Stephens, Sound and Video Design. Wendy Steiner, costumes. Jeff Wiley, Willie. Wiley, Willie, yeah, yeah. Kayla Shiltkin, and Wendy Suya, Director. Okay, now we're going to do our best to bring everybody back, and...
If everyone could kind of start filling out this area, yep, and kind of move back, and then fill on in if you're taller. Yeah, that's really... So if people think, if you can kind of come over here, Jeff, and maybe some people would do like over this, or yeah, perfect, just kind of sit over on here. Perfect. And even in the back row, if you could step over like, ah, perfect. Do we make another row? Is that possible? And even to do like some like this, and then kind of fill in and even scrunch it up the side? Sorry. Perfect, thank you. And if we could some of it on this side here, there we go. Perfect. Okay, yeah, perfect. This table, it's just like... Thank you. Okay. There we go. Everyone can make sure they can see me, so that means I can see you. That'd be perfect. You want to look right here? I'm going to take a few, one, two, three, cheers! Awesome. And then I'm going to step out of the way, so families and friends can take one, and they'll like, you're supposed to be in. You're supposed to be in. I was being a mom. Okay, sorry. One, two, three, cheers! Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. There we go. Everyone can make sure they can see me, so that means I can see you. That'd be perfect. You want to look right here? I'm going to take a few, one, two, three, cheers! Awesome. And then I'm going to step out of the way, so families and friends can take one, and they'll like, you're supposed to be in. You're supposed to be in. One, two, three. Cheers! I was being a mom. Okay, sorry. One, two, three, cheers! Okay, thank you. Thank you! could you please stand? Students, please thank your family members who came out with you tonight for their support. If you haven't figured it out yet, there are cookies in the corner, so please take a few with you. Regular board meeting starts at seven. School board members are here to visit if you wish. Thank you all for coming.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order Independent School District 624 to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Newmaster.
President.
Wilson.
Here.
Beloit.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Fahy.
Here.
Mullen.
Here.
Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, two to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before us, we have an agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Newmaster. Any discussion regarding the agenda? All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, we have an agenda. Customary for us at the beginning of the year, we have a reorganization of the board running for the different spots, so with that, I will open up nominations for the office of Chair. Are there any nominations? Mr. Chapman?
I nominate Don Mullen.
Thank you, and I accept that nomination. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations closed, thank you very much. Next, we, we need to, all those in favor of accepting the nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, we, I am elected to chair, thank you very much. Next is the Vice Chair position nominations. I will now call nominations to order for the Office of Vice Chair. Mr. Wilson.
I nominate Kim Chapman.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Mr. Chapman, do you accept Vice Chair?
I do.
I will ask for a motion to accept Mr. Chapman as the Vice Chair.
The moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. Congratulations. I will now open nominations in the order for the Office of Clerk. Ms. Newmaster.
I nominate Alex Fahy for Clerk.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Ms. Fahy, do you accept the Clerk's position?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept Ms. Fahy as the Clerk?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, open nominations for the Office of Treasurer. Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Scott Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, do you accept?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Can I have a motion to accept Mr. Wilson as the Treasurer?
The moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. All in flavor, it's that night, I'm trying to go fast. All in favor? Please say aye, thank you. Opposed, same sign? With that, the reorganization of the school board is finished. I will close nominations at this time. Now, we will move on to the consent agenda. This is customary for us to have a consent agenda. It has our minutes, it has several things in there. The one thing we are very thankful for is the generosity of our community, and this month is no different. Bear with me 30 seconds. We received several large donations to Otter Lake, to Onika, to the White Bear South, White Bear North. We thank for the generosity of the community very much. With that, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Fahy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion regarding the consent agenda? This will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Fahy.
Aye.
Mullen.
Aye.
Okay, with that, we have a consent agenda. This is the time in the program where we accept public comment. Typically, what we do is ask for residents to fill out a white card, which I believe they're usually on a table over there. I don't know that there's a table over there, but are they over there? Thank you. I do not see any up at the desk. Is there anybody who'd like to address the school board? Seeing none, we will move on to C1, the informational items, which is the overview of the White Bear Week and update on the registration information for 2019-2020. Ms. Vetti.
Good evening, newly elected Board Chair Mullen and members of the school board. Thank you for giving us a few minutes here just to talk a little bit about what is happening here in January for Welcome to White Bear Month. It's hard to believe, but we're in the midst of a great year, and we're already planning for next fall. And so we have, our families are coming into the buildings, and we're so excited to welcome them in. So I'll go through the different levels of education that we've got. So at our early childhood level, tomorrow actually, our preschool registration is opening, so families are ready and willing and able to do so starting right away at 8:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. And then later in the spring, our early childhood family education is happening. The registration information will be available shortly coming up here in the spring. An ECFE is a program that parents and children go together, spend some time together, and then separate for child classes and parent classes, and then come back together again as well. And then, of course, our screening is happening throughout the year. So that registration is happening all throughout the year for our early childhood families. At elementary, our elementary schools hosted tours and information sessions last week. And we do also have a kindergarten gathering event happening later in the spring, and that will give our new incoming kindergarteners a chance to meet families, I'm sorry, to meet their teachers, meet teachers in the schools, and then see the schools and the classrooms and that as well. And again, it's hard to believe, we're looking forward to welcoming our class of 2032. So I did just say that our kindergarten class is coming in as the class of 2032. And then at our middle school level, our parent information nights for our current fifth grade families moving into both Central and Sunrise Park Middle School. Those information nights took place the first week in January, so as soon as students were back, their parents were in the auditorium and in the schools, learning about the opportunities for their incoming sixth graders for next fall. And then at the high school last week, the parent information sessions were hosted for all levels at our high school, for our parents then for last week. And so any families who are looking for tours of any of our locations are absolutely invited to contact our schools and set something up. Welcome to White Bear Month is certainly a time for a bunch of people to come in, but for those that it didn't work to, or who want to go through the tour again, are absolutely invited to do so by calling any of our buildings, and our school listings are on our website, the IST624.org. And so with that, I'll just go through a few of the things that we've done, that we've implemented and continue to implement this year in reaching out to all of our families. So we continue to provide the registration packet, the detailed information, both in a paper form and online. We also did, again, the Elementary Experiences bookmark to families who have incoming kindergartners. And we were very clear to say, here are a list of experiences that your kindergarten-age student could come to school with, or you could practice with your child. Of course, all children are different, but that is just guidance for families who have incoming kindergarteners. And we made that available to all of the families that we had the mailing, that received the mailing list in both, in three different languages. We provided English, Spanish, and Mongh, those elementary experiences information. And then we also have printed information for the English, the Elementary Guide is printed in English, and then available online in Spanish and Mongh as well. And then another change that we had done this year was to redo, or to republish, or I should say redo completely, our videos. And so we did all through, we have done elementary, middle school, and high school, and our early childhood is almost completed as well, but we're going to show just a sampling, and we'll show our elementary video here, so bear with me, I'll click into it and we'll be good to go.
The elementary school years in our district are the time to learn what being a bear is all about. This is where the fun all-day learning begins, and the opportunities never end. Students can challenge themselves with lessons and learn from excellent teachers. Wait, did I forget to mention? We can learn from excellent teachers. For bears, kindergarten means inspiring students. Teachers make sure each child understands they are valuable, unique, and capable of learning and achieving. You name it, we've got it. All students are encouraged to think critically and appreciate diversity and develop positive attitudes. Each elementary school offers word language opportunities in all grades. We partner with many organizations to give students the best experiences around, like art and water safety lessons, to name a few. Each elementary school has their own unique characteristics. One elementary school offers students an international backwater program, which encourages students to be global thinkers through the IB model. At elementary schools, there are strong nature and science, technology, engineering, mathematics opportunities. There are even enhanced music offerings at schools with strings and piano, along with an orchestra starting at fifth grade. Gifted and talented opportunities are available at all schools, too. If this is just the beginning, think of all the exciting experiences students have to look forward to as they continue on their days as a bear. In middle school, students can continue with more language and do some variety of classes. That interest, middle school and high school students can enjoy more than 40 college credit classes and career pathways opportunities. They can even participate in activities where they can earn... They can even participate in activities where they can earn state-level and national recognition. Being an elementary student in White Bear means shaping your future and making a lasting impact on the community, one paw at a time.
Okay, thank you for letting me showcase that quickly. And you probably saw that while the video was going, the closed captioning at the bottom was in English to begin, and then I went in and snuck in and changed it to Spanish. And so, that's something that we do with all of our videos, they're closed captioned in English, but then they're also available if you go into the bottom corner. And the closed captioning could be available in Spanish as well for families who that comes in handy for. And so, with that, we, again, we have a great thing happening this month, and of course, the welcoming community will continue even after Welcome to White Bear Month is finished. But I am open for any questions that anybody may have.
Questions for Ms. Vetti? I just want to thank you very much for your work. I mean, that's great, the video is great, and go Bears!
That's right, go Bears! Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to C2, which is the update on the engagement efforts. Dr. Kazmircheck?
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight a few of the ways that we are engaging with our community and our staff and students. Three main elements within the district's strategic direction for the 2018-19 academic year have been the strategic plan, facilities planning, and staff engagement related to the Big Sleuth. Starting with the strategic plan. Don't get caught up here. Thank you. Starting with the strategic plan, with eight strategies that shaped the district's future through the engagement of more than 200 community members last spring, it is important to focus on the new mission that was approved by the board. So, our new mission that you approved last spring, the mission of the White Bear Lake Area School District, the community at the forefront of educational excellence, honoring our legacy and courageously building the future, is to ensure each student realizes their unique talents and abilities and makes meaningful contributions with local and global impact through a vital system distinguished by students who design and create their own future, diversity of people and ideas, safe nurturing and inspiring environments, exceptional staff and families committed to student success, and abundant and engaged community partners. So, the word engaged appears in the last bullet point, but it really is encompassed in each of the preceding areas as well. Engaged students, engaged in diverse views, engaging environments, engaged staff and families, and an engaged community. We are excited to see where our new engaging strategic direction takes us. The strategic planning process does not stop at the district level. This fall, each of our schools and programs began their site-based process, with district staff members working hand-in-hand with family and community members to shape the future in these smaller school communities. You'll learn more about those coming up at the work-study meeting in a couple of weeks. Also taking place is comprehensive facilities planning, another engagement priority this year. It's also strategy six of the strategic plan. Progress we've made this year include collecting data, includes collecting data, and convening a facilities planning committee consisting of students, staff members, parents, and community members. The overall committee has been split into three subcommittees. We're focused on learning spaces, community spaces, and physical conditions. The next step in this process is for the committee to present findings at the January 28th school board work-study meeting. This committee's work is being, January 16th, this Wednesday, the group is coming together to finalize that presentation, and it'll go to the school board on the 28th. We've had a busy fall, and this spring will be filled with activity as we continue to discuss our comprehensive facilities needs. The third major engagement initiative happening this year is the Big Sleuth. Through this process, staff members have been invited to think, explore, and design. The engagement has been impressive, with 143 ideas submitted and voted on by over 500 staff members. Six ideas moved forward to the design thinking phase. Idea champions attended training last week and are in the midst of prototyping and testing their ideas using the design thinking process. We are excited to see where these design conversations will take us. Another ongoing way our families and community members are engaged with the district are through advisory committees. There are many examples of this type of engagement happening throughout the district. A few examples include Special Education's Parent Advisory Council. This group has a long history in the district. American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. This advisory committee was formed more recently, but they've been able to engage and serve students in new, important ways. And in fact, we've had, they've had an impact on our policies and on our calendar and a lot of other important things. Parent Leaders Network, this group was changed to focus on the networking that happens this year, and we continue to play around with the design as it takes on a grassroots feel. And more informal advisory also happens at the Periodic Coffee with Dr. K events, which began during the 2017-18 school year. Through our adult education program, we're able to engage with adult community members in various ways. Examples include ESL for families, with some classes incorporating parent education into the mix as well. The district's participating in the many faces of White Bear Lake Consortium, which has been very well received. And our overall community services offerings continue to offer opportunities to all adult community members, anchoring the community to the schools. Those who are over the age of 65 are engaged with our programs as well. A few examples of these engagement efforts include our Senior Activities Pass, with more than 400 area seniors participating and getting free admission into White Bear home activities. Meals on Wheels, which serves meals, which serves an average of 350 meals per week, and served just shy of 18,000 meals in 2018. Volunteer Opportunities, more than 300 of our area seniors volunteer and donated more than 7,500 hours in service through Meals on Wheels, in the Craft Corner Gift Shop as administrative support, and as activity leads, and in our schools as mentors and reading buddies. The district also hosted its first community volunteer fair last year, which was open to seniors and the broader community. And our Senior Center, the Normandy Park Education Center is hopping each day with card-playing, crafting, and ukulele-playing, to name a few of the activities that our seniors engage in. Engagement within the classroom is happening as well. At the high school, our Career Pathways offers great examples of engagement with our industry partners. So, for example, during the summer of 2018, our students participated in 70 different internships, and more than 120 students participated in a Career Pathways program. Our Career Pathways program regularly communicates with almost 400 people from a variety of industry partners, including pathway companies, community organizations, post-secondary institutions, local businesses, state representatives, and other individuals in the field. More than 60 career speakers presented at the White Bear Lake Area High School Annual Career Event in December, and more than 70 industry partners attended the Career Pathways Expo in November. Similar examples such as reading buddies at the elementary level and career speakers at the middle school level can be found throughout the district. And student engagement, examples of student engagement can be found as well, including participation in middle school and high school advisory committees. The middle school and high school student advisory committee, superintendent's advisory committee meets quarterly and have genuine conversations about important school matters such as school safety and facilities, most recently. As I'm sure McKenna could attest, these meetings are very honest and inspiring. I know I'm always impressed with our students' insights. They have helped to shape a lot of the work around more recently, like I mentioned, the school safety and facilities work. Gaining that student perspective is so incredibly valuable. Students are encouraged, more than ever, to influence their own learning. Student voice is critical, and we believe, as an organization, that greater autonomy and confidence in learning will result from more engaged students. And just one last highlight, students helped us host our recent legislative breakfast, where many of our students spoke on the topic of a student agency and also led conversations about other topics as well. So, those are, that is not an all-inclusive list, but it's a fairly lengthy list of all the ways in which we are engaging with our community, with our staff, and with our students. We know that's a priority for our school board, and so, we hope that these efforts continue. They certainly will, and they certainly make our decision-making stronger and more representative of the community. So, thank you very much.
Questions for Dr. Kazmircheck? And next, we will go into C3, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. K?
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. You're not done with me yet. All right, student recognition tonight. Before tonight's meeting, we recognize students who participated in this fall's award-winning Mamma Mia the Musical. Students were recognized by the Hennepin Theater Trust Spotlight Program, receiving both group and individual accolades, including outstanding overall production, overall performance, ensemble performance, and movement and dance performance by an ensemble. The students will perform on the Hennepin Theater Trust State Theater stage in June for the Spotlight Showcase. Congratulations, Bears! And some of them are here yet. They just had to stick around for the board meeting, they were so excited. Coffee with Dr. K is a way for community members to engage in a different way. So, community members are invited to stop by and chat over a cup of coffee. The next Coffee with Dr. K actually happens to be tomorrow morning, January 15th, between 7:30 and 8:30 at the Downtown White Bear Lake Caribou Coffee. There is no set agenda, so please feel free to order a coffee and then find me in the meeting room to join in the conversation. The district is hosting its fourth Staff and Community Well-being Series session, using mindfulness to increase well-being and effectiveness in the classroom and at home. This event will take place at 7:00 p.m. tomorrow, January 15th, in the North Campus Theater. The district facilities planning committee is wrapping up the first phase of its work. 90 community and staff members have been working diligently on three committees related to learning spaces, community spaces, and physical conditions. The committee will bring the results of their work related to a facilities needs assessment to the next school board work-study meeting on January 28th. And please remember to dress warmly on these cold winter days, especially as this unusually warm stretch comes to an end later this week. The White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation, through The Closet, has an ample supply of jackets, mittens, hats, and scarves. Should you know any families that could benefit from the generosity of our community, please contact The Closet at, I'm going to spell this out, C-L-O-S-E-T-W-B-L-A-E-F at gmail.com. Members of our foundation and other volunteers will then contact the family and make confidential arrangements to help those who do not already have warm clothes. All right, with that, I'll turn it over to McKenna Pratt for our student liaison update.
The new year has started, and to the students and faculty, that means the end of semester one is approaching fast, so good luck to everyone on their finals. The boys' basketball team has a winning score of 11 to 2, and boys' hockey also has a winning score of 12 to 2. With the way both teams have been playing this season, I know we are all hoping for great results in the final tournaments. Student Council's annual winter dance is right around the corner. The dance will be at South on Saturday, January 26th, starting at 7:00 p.m. This is a great opportunity to be with friends and dress up in everyone's favorite theme, Hawaiian. Also, a big thanks to all who donated at the blood drive. With your donations, we were able to collect 136 units of blood, which makes us the largest blood drive our school has had with Memorial Blood Center. If you didn't get a chance to donate, there's another opportunity in April for NHS's second blood drive of the year. And with that, I wish everyone a great start to 2019.
All right, thank you, McKenna. And I have got one more thing. So, at this point of my report, and welcome to the podium, our three teacher guests, or three here, about two of them are here. Welcome our guests we have in the audience tonight, as we recognize white bear teachers who recently achieved National Board certification. Congratulations to the district's latest National Board certified teachers, including Lincoln Elementary Teacher Katie Anderson, Hugo Elementary Teacher Jane Briggs, and not with us this evening, Onika Elementary Teacher Evan Wiseman. Each of these accomplished educators earned the profession's highest mark of achievement through a rigorous, performance-based peer review process, demonstrating their proven impact on student learning and achievement. I welcome each of you to speak briefly about your National Board certification experience, if you wish. You can, you don't have to if you don't want to. It's okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to join. Thank you for the opportunity to join the White Bear Lake Cohort for National Board. That was an exciting opportunity. One of the things we encourage in our students is to be lifelong learners, and so, it's exciting to have that opportunity as a teacher and be supported by our district.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to thank Deb and all the other people who helped us. It was a really good learning experience. We really got to dig deep into our teaching, and we learned a lot of really useful things that we can use for pretty much the rest of our careers. So, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for your dedication. And now, I'd like to welcome the board members to line up at the front, so we can present certificates to you and get a group photo. All right, Chair Mullen, that concludes my superintendent's report.
All right. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. I do have one short addendum to Dr. Kazmircheck's closet comments. I'd like to add, the clothing provided there is completely free of charge, and it's arranged in a private setting with prospective recipients, so there's no crowds that they have to bustle their way through or anything like that. And any staff or faculty member throughout the district is able to contact The Closet on the family's behalf.
Dr. Kazmircheck, if you can read that email address one more time, or if there's a contact person, if someone doesn't have access to email, appreciate it.
Okay, somebody might, can somebody find a phone number for me while I'm reading the email address? So, the email address is closet, C-L-O-S-E-T-W-B-L-A-E-F at gmail.com, and, or you can reach out to-
Can they contact Jody?
Or Jody, absolutely.
Here at the district center?
Yep. Did I get that right?
Yep. All right. Any other questions for, on the superintendent's report? Okay, hearing that, we will move directly to our operational items for this evening. The first one will be the school board operating procedures for 2019. Is that you, Dr. Kazmircheck? Oh?
It's you.
So, this is the, please excuse me, at the organizational meeting, this is the rules, this is our, approve the rules in the order of the board agenda format for 2019. Is there a motion to approve the rules as presented in the board packet? A motion by Ms. Newmaster, is there a second? So, US Bank is the custodian of those funds, they're managed by PFM. Bremer Bank is our local bank that serves as a place where we deposit funds that the district collects, and we pay general payroll out of US Bank. So, recommendation is for the board to accept the official banks, accounts, and signers on the list.
You've heard the recommendation of the board of the administration, is there a motion to do so?
No moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. You know what, we should probably have a roll call vote with this one. Excuse me, sorry. Any discussion regarding the matter? Be and none?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is the action on the regular and the work-study meetings for 2019 as presented in the board packet. Is there a, there's a recommended action that the administration recommends that the school board approve, the school board meeting dates for 2019, from January, and from January 2020 through August 2020. Is there a motion to do so?
No moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Any, Mr. Wa, is there any questions regarding, any discussion regarding the meeting dates and work-study?
Nope.
All in favor of accepting the meeting dates and work-study dates, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, we have a calendar set. Next is the action on the official depositories for the school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures. Mr. Wall?
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kasmercheck. Item E4 lists the official banks and accounts that are all, where all district funds are deposited. Also lists the authorized signers. Just would note that all, that most school district funds are positioned at the Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund, and that's an organization of Minnesota school districts that serves as a cash management tool, so school districts can pool their funds and get the best possible yield while maintaining liquidity. So, US Bank is the custodian of those funds, they're managed by PFM. Bremer Bank is our local bank that serves as a place where we deposit funds that the district collects, and we pay general payroll out of US Bank. So, recommendation is for the board to accept the official banks, accounts, and signers on the list.
You've heard the recommendation of the board of the administration, is there a motion to do so?
No moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. You know what, we should probably have a roll call vote with this one. Excuse me, sorry. Any discussion regarding the matter? Be and none?
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wall. Next, on the agenda is E5, which is the official newspaper for 2019. Dr. Kasmercheck?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. School districts are required to have an official newspaper on record, and ours has been The White Bear Press, and that is the recommendation going forward as well.
You've heard a recommendation from the administration for the official publication, is there a motion to do so?
No moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. Under discussion, how long do we have a number of, how long that White Bear Press has been our official publication?
I don't know that. No.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Being this has some financial to it, we should probably do a roll call vote.
Okay. Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Okay. Next is item E6, which is the action on the appointment of our compliance officer. Dr. Kasmercheck?
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. So each November, the administration certifies to the Minnesota Department of Education that we are in compliance with federal laws and regulations, and state laws and rules prohibiting discrimination. Some of our policies specifically state that a legal responsibility for receiving complaints is assigned to a position. Other policies require that the school board annually designate the person to whom the responsibility is assigned. To remove ambiguity and assure compliance in all of our policies, we're asking the school board to take action on the following appointments. District ADA and 504 Coordinator Lisa Orne, District Human Rights Officer Matt Mons, and Title IX Coordinator Sarah Paul.
You've heard the, the recommended action is to approve the appointment of Mr. Mons. Ms., you've heard the action, you've heard the recommended action, excuse me. Is there a motion to do so?
No moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Is there any discussion regarding the matter? This, the voice vote?
Yeah.
All in favor of accepting the recommended action, please do, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, if I can get this thing straight before the end of the meeting this week. All right. Item E7, action on the local education agency authorization. Dr. Kasmercheck?
All right, thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. So, the School Board of White Bear Lake Area Schools has historically authorized a superintendent as a local education agency representative for the purpose of reviewing and approving documents required for compliance to federal programs, including, included in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. So the recommended action is to authorize myself, Dr. Wayne Kasmercheck, as a local education agency representative for the purpose of reviewing and approving documents required for compliance to federal programs included in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act for 2019.
Thank you, Dr. Kasmercheck. You've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to do so? Motion by Dr. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. Is there any discussion regarding the matter? See and none, all in, is it a voice?
Voice.
All in favor of accepting the recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. E8, action on the designee of legal counsel. Dr. Kasmercheck?
All right, thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. This remains the same as in previous years, so the recommended, recommended action is the school board approves Knutson, Flynn, and Deans, Ratwick, Rozak, and Maloney, Rupp, Anderson, Squires, and Walzberger, and others as needed for 2019. The school board approves authorized personnel to contact legal counsel, including school board chair, school board vice chair, superintendent, assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, assistant superintendent for finance and operations, director of human resources, director of student support services, director of community services, director of communications and community relations, and director of technology and innovation.
You've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to do so?
No moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, second by Ms. Fahy. Any discussion regarding the action? This will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. So E9, action on the appointment of the representative for the Equality Alliance Minnesota. Dr. Kasmercheck, is that-
I can take that, yep. So each year, the White Bear Lake Area School Board appoints a member of our school board to serve on the Equity Alliance Minnesota Board. Currently, Ellen Fahy serves on this board, and we recommend that she continues to serve on the Equity Alliance Minnesota Board for 2019.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion to do so?
No moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion regarding the action? All in favor of the recommended action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, and we are off to E10, which is the action on the appointment of a representative for the Intermediate School District 916. Dr. Kasmercheck, do you want to take that one, too?
Sure, yep. Thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. Each year, the White Bear Lake Area School Board appoints a member of our school board to serve on the Intermediate School District 916 Board. Currently, Kim Chapman serves on this board, and we recommend that he continues to serve on the Intermediate School District 916 Board for 2019.
You've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to do so?
No moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. Is there any discussion regarding the action? All in favor of the recommended action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, and we have, we are off to, so now we are off to E11, which is school board policies, and it is customary for school board policies to come before the board two times, and the second time for final passage. They've had time to go through these, these all came at last month's meeting, they're here again at this month's meeting, so I will do them all in one fell swoop, and can have some discussion if we need to, and move these policies. So, well, it'd be policy 419, policy 421, policy 511, policy 530, policy 707, policy 708, policy 721, as presented in the board package. Is there a motion to move those policies?
No moved.
Motion by Ms. Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. Is there any discussion regarding those policies? They've been in the board packet, we've gone through them, this is the second move, so with that, all in favor of adopting those policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. So, this is the point where we go, we need to go into closed section, which is E12. What I'd like to do is, would like to give some time, just a couple minutes. I know that some, most of them people will leave. I know there's a lot of students, students in the audience that are going to get and probably be home, ready for bed, to go to school tomorrow, because it's early. So, if there's anything we'd like to say to them before we move to E12, thank you all for coming, we really appreciate you coming to a board meeting. I know it's part of the class, but we love seeing you here and being involved. So, is there anything else that we'd like to say before? Dr. Newmaster?
I'd just like to invite the community to a Lunar New Year celebration at North Campus. It's the 15th Annual, and it's hosted by the Korean Cultural Association and the Chulki Korean Dance and演奏. And there's activities in the cafeteria, art, and traditional games, and the big draw is always the free program at 1:00 in the theater, and it'll be Korean dance, drum, and music, so.
What's the date?
Lots of people will come, and we appreciate-
What's the date?
That is January, the last Saturday in January, the 26th. Go home and your dishes and backpack, and I know you look at every item in there, so we're glad. We hope to see you, and it's a fun thing. We appreciate White Bear providing a good home for these activities. Thanks.
Anything else? So what we'll do, this, the process, will this work, is that we will need to go into closed session, and we'll read through that piece. What we're going to ask you to do is clear the hall, we'll shut the doors, we'll go into closed session right here. We will go through our business, and then we'll reopen the meeting, so you're welcome to come back down and go through that piece. So-
We need a motion for closed session.
I'm going to read it right now. So with that, the next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D-05 subsection 3C. While in closed session, the board will consider an offer on to purchase property identified as PID number 18 dot 031 dot 21 dot 43 dot 0003, located in the city of Hugo, County of Washington, State of Minnesota. Pursuant to the law, I have cited, I hereby ask for a motion and a second to go into closed session for the purpose of considering an offer to purchase real property.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn this regular board meeting session and move to a closed session.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Is this a voice vote? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? With that, I'd like to, we'll call us back into session from closed session. I will ask the clerk to identify the board members present.
Newmaster, Wilson, Beloit, Chapman, Ellison, Fahy, and Mullen are present.
All for the record. With that, I will, there's a recommendation to purchase, recommendation to approve the purchase of property identified as PID number 18 dot 031 dot 21 dot 43 dot 0003, located in the city of Hugo, the County of Washington, and the State of Minnesota. Is there a motion to do so?
No moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? With that, this will require a roll call vote.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
With that, the motion passes. We will move on to our F-agenda item, which is the board forum. Is there anything under board forum that hasn't already been mentioned? Ms. Ellison?
I just wanted to share that I was with a group of teachers this weekend, and a teacher from Moundsview said, you know, I have a teacher friend from Otter Lake, and they did this really, you did this really amazing program where teachers got to choose ideas, and then the district is going to support them. I can't even believe it. So I just want you to know that word is getting out about the big sleuth, and that teachers appreciate the agency that the district is giving them.
Okay.
Okay.
Well said.
And I have something, too, also, as soon as I'm finished writing. I just have, as the Equity Alliance rep on the board, just a brief report on the search for our new executive director. So you're aware of that, because we were just signing our intent form to continue as a member of Equity Alliance.